It's to see folks here tonight and I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. First item is pledge of allegiance. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 24th.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan.
Second.
Seconded by Ilda. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving these minutes, please indicate by raising your hand. Any opposed? Abstentions? Katina, thank you. For Chair's report, I just would like to report that last night at the town meeting, it was the expenditure of $250,000 in money was approved. And that will be for the planning phase for the Wyndham Elementary School consolidation project. And the, it now needs to go to the Board of Finance next Wednesday for them to take action to get the bonding for the, for the 250,000. Mark, were you going to say something?
I just wanted to mention you skipped over public comment.
Oh, oh my gosh, I'm so sorry. I will stop talking. Thank you, Mark. Sometimes you get tunnel vision when you're chairing a meeting. So if people would indulge me for one second, I'm just going to make an announcement that the school and town budgets are up for approval or not by the voters. People can go and vote on the budgets next Tuesday, March 14th, between 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM at your regular voting place, polling place. If you have any questions, you can contact Town Hall. And if you want to see more information about the Board of Ed budget, you can get that information on the Board of Ed website. And the town budget information is on the town website. But I encourage people to go and vote next Tuesday, the 14th of May. And now we'll go back to public comment. I'm very sorry. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Did anybody sign up? Is there anybody who would like to speak who didn't sign up? Anybody online who would like to speak during public comment?
Yeah, I have a question.
Could you please identify yourself?
Yeah, my name's Ashley Lewis. I'm a parent of three children at Wyndham Center School.
Okay.
So I have a question about this whole new school, like, you know, the closure of Wyndham Center School. Can we talk about that at this point or no?
You are allowed to make comments about it. The board members are now allowed to talk to you back and forth. We do have discussion for the board of this topic later on in the agenda. But if there's anything you would like to share with us, you can share it now.
Okay, so I can't share it later on, once I hear the information?
There's a second public comment at the very end of the meeting, if you would like to comment then.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll wait because I don't, I want to, you know, I only have a certain amount of information. So I want to wait to see what is disclosed in the meeting. I'm just like, I do would like, I would like to voice as a parent that I think it's really upsetting that, like, we weren't notified until we went in for parent teacher conferences. I think as the Board of Education, you should have notified parents, like, if there's a possibility that the school is closing so that parents could have made a more educated decision on possibly, like, maybe trying to get into the STEM school lottery. You know, like I said, I have three kids at the STEM school, or three kids at Wyndham Center School. I have another child coming into school. And I just think it's frustrating that there's so many ideas thrown around and no, like, I don't know. I never got notified until I went into the parent teacher conferences this year. I just think that, like, we should have gotten something from the district.
Thank you for your comment. I'm now allowed to discuss this back and forth with you during public.
That's fine.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment? Thank you. And as I said, there is going to be discussion about this on the agenda tonight. There's no action item tonight on the agenda to vote on this because it is, it is my opinion that the board members will need to think about and consider what comes up in discussion tonight. Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. In the board packet, you saw that you have the attendance and discipline report. In this particular packet, you also have a unique suspension rate report. As you know, the leadership team is very much focused on improving overall attendance, reducing chronic absenteeism, and finding solutions to reduce what they call exclusionary discipline practices, which are in and out of school suspensions. To date, some of the data points, some of the things that we are considering, consider positive, we're proud of, all nine of our schools, including Wyndham Early Childhood Center, which is not included in the data you received, has improved overall daily attendance rates and reduced their chronic absenteeism. Five of our nine schools are currently below the 30% district target for chronic absenteeism. Those schools are Wyndham Center, North Wyndham, Natchog, Barrows, and Wyndham Middle School. Overall discipline, when we compare discipline to the same time as last year, we see a decrease, 11.51% decrease in overall incidents. We see a significant decrease in out of school suspensions, 19.51% when compared to the same timeframe last year. In school suspensions also have seen a decrease, 5.91%. And if you take a look at the unique suspension rate chart, you will see that we're comparing the data as of April 30th to last year's data, the '22, '23 school year. And we are making good progress in trying to find other ways to deal with behaviors, those that are not, where we're not legislated to make decisions of in, in school, out of school, or expulsions. One of the things that I'm going to talk more with the board about is moving forward in '24, '25, I'm making a recommendation that we offer the Board of Ed four to six times a year, a glimpse at our attendance and our discipline data. I can explain that more when we have those discussions. I think that the leadership team is very much focused on it and we're making good decisions. And the data shows that we're making a dent. And I'm not sure that putting the data out there every two weeks is beneficial to the district. So we can talk more about that, but I wanted you to, to have this information now. I don't know if there's any specific questions about attendance or discipline.
Mary?
I, I think it's very important to have the information for each meeting. And I am very concerned, the middle school has almost 100 more incidents since the last board packet, although that hadn't been updated. And there's three new suspensions at the high school, I mean, no, expulsions. So I, you know, feel that it needs to actually be a greater priority. And to me, it's, it's very disheartening to see these numbers and to think about the children whose, in, whose educations are being impacted, not just the ones included on this list, but the other children in the school.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody else who has any comments on that? Or questions for Dr. Youngberg? Okay, and just clearly, the superintendent made a recommendation, that's up to the board to discuss with the superintendent about how we deal about, deal with reporting this. So Mary, we'll have a chance to have a discussion as a board about that. Thanks.
Keep going?
Yep.
Next up is just to, hopefully there's a, a slide to go with this. There's a cute picture, I think. There it is. The slide from Take Time to Play event on April 27th. All of the school mascots got together for this picture. It's a great picture. It's a great event. So we just wanted to celebrate all the folks that were involved in Take Time to Play. Yeah, you can clap. It was a, yes. Any questions about Take Time to Play? Katina, you look like you're bursting.
I would like, I would like to add that, you know, we did this in coordination with Wyndham Public School. Thank you, all the staff that was there. And we had 12 different agencies providing information. And we were told we had more than 300 people participate this year. So it was the best yet. And it was the ninth annual. Thank you for continuing to prioritize that all our children are safe.
Excellent. Always good. Last thing in my report, and then I have a few more things I just want to mention. But the last thing in my report is the list of the graduation and promotion dates and ceremonies that, of course, the board members are all invited to. So you have all of the dates, the times, and the locations for each of the upcoming events. Any questions?
Mark your calendars.
They're always so close sometimes, like Wyndham Middle School and Barrows.
We usually do them the same day on purpose. Yeah.
On purpose?
Yes. Get the eighth graders promoted the same day. Yeah, we have just enough time to get in between the two ceremonies. It's working so far. I also wanted to just celebrate the community in general and our board members for taking part in our 30th anniversary of the Companeros program. That was a really wonderful event on Saturday. And I appreciate, appreciated seeing so many board members and staff members there. Also, same thing applies to the Natchog Parade a few days before. So it's, it's always nice to see the board show up and support our schools and our programs. And I, last thing I want to say is just to let everyone know that this is the week that the district celebrates our staff. We use the Teacher Appreciation Week as the day to celebrate all Wyndham employees. So our HR department has been working hard to put out nice district offerings in terms of saying how much we appreciate you. On Monday, they received cookies. On Tuesday, breakfast treats. Today, they received an appreciation booklet that gives them all sorts of, like coupons and special events and special things set up for them in and around the community. They have a catered lunch planned for them tomorrow and a gift planned for them on Friday. And each of their schools also does things, so that we're trying to take care of our staff members this week. So I just wanted to make sure the board knew that that was happening. I think you get my emails, so you know that, but.
Yeah, we do get the HR emails. Yeah. I just want to thank the staff that did all the planning for the Natchog Parade and all the planning for the Companeros 30th Anniversary Celebration. I know people really put a lot of time and effort into that. And you're very much appreciated for what you did to make those events a success. And the board members and, and everybody else for showing up. Thanks. And Mark, of course, for emceeing the Companeros event.
It was certainly a pleasure working with Madeline DeGroen. And you're, and you're right, the staff did an excellent job putting it all together and bringing back a lot of the alumni, a lot of the older staff members. It was, it was a good event.
So now we're on to committee reports. And Tracy, Holly, and I made a mistake and included school planning and design on giving a report where they met before our last meeting, not since our last meeting. So we're going to skip over that and go to ad hoc elementary school construction planning. I'm going to hand it to you, Mark.
Yeah, we did, we did meet. We finalized the RFP, which has now been posted on the websites. And I believe in two weeks, we'll have the first, love it informal meeting with the, any of the potential bidders to discuss the, the RFP. And then we'll continue to move forward now that the budget has been approved for the hiring of the staff person. We're, we're looking to hire somebody to be an advisor to the committee to work through the details of what size school, how much it would cost, what, you know, the bus lanes, traffic sites, and all of that. So it's moving forward.
Any questions for Mark? Okay, Mark, you're on again, Finance and Audit.
One more time, I get a hat trick. The Finance and Audit met right before this meeting, reviewed the year-to-date budget, which we continue to be moving towards ending up in a positive situation. So we won't overspend the budget this year. And we're also looking at the, looking at the journal entry monies. And we're recommending the journal entry of 754, $754,261.
You mean a budget transfer?
I'm sorry, budget transfers, yes.
And do you want to say anything about the survey on the health plan or no?
We did also approve a questionnaire in, in consideration of changing health plans for the staff. They're putting, the administration's putting together a questionnaire to get some information from the employees who are not currently on the health plan, as if they would be interested and what would anybody be interested in? Because we want to be able to try and forecast the cost of moving this, this plan as, as we move along. So we're still considering the, the moving of the plan from the current self-insured plan to the state health plan.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? And for the listeners, including staff, we haven't made a decision about switching health plans. We're just trying to do our due diligence about whether or not that makes sense and if we can offer an option to the employees that's different. So stay tuned. So now we're going to move on to the discussion items on the agenda. And the first one is the proposed new scholarships, three of them from the Wyndham Federation of Teachers. And I don't know who's presenting this.
I don't know if someone formally presenting, would you like to, Cam? If not, I can just read through what they are, but if you, either way, works for me. Thank you.
Yes, exactly. Hi, I'm Kami Nyland-Porier. I'm the president of the Wyndham Federation of Teachers. And we're happy to offer three new scholarships in addition to the one we have already for many years given for a student who goes into education. We have the funds to support three scholarships for many years to come. And I think you had, probably have the description in your, in your board packets. La Familia is a, La Familia First and Family Scholarship would support a student who is a first-generation student attending college. Supporting Schools Supporting Students Scholarship would be given to the highest-ranking graduating senior with financial need. And it would be someone attending a four-year college or university who intends to go into a field such as social work or nursing, speech and language, something else that might support our schools aside from being a teacher. Because we need all those people too. And then the last one is a Wyndham Whippet Spirit Scholarship. And that would go to a student who has done their entire career, K through 12, here in Wyndham. So I'm, I came just to, if there are any questions, I'll try to answer them.
Anybody have any questions, comments? Katina?
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're happy to do it.
It's very, very exciting. Ilda?
So the, the third one for K through 12, what if there's multiple students?
Well, the Wyndham High School does have a scholarship committee. So I would anticipate that they would go through the applicants, just as they do with all the other scholarships, to, to give that award. And it could be one award, or it might be two. It could be a thousand as one, or two $500 scholarships. And it does say that preference would be given to students who have continuously shown Wyndham spirit.
Thank you. Very generous advice.
Thank you, Cam. And WFT?
Yep, and this is the action item on the agenda. So hopefully we'll vote to approve these scholarships. Thank you. The next thing is a policy revisions for second reading, which is the proposed management plan for food allergies. Katina, is there anything you'd like to say?
Well, this was revised by our nursing director. And he's recommended that we approve for, and I, we recommend that it is approved tonight after the second reading, as it will benefit our students. It will be very clear what has to happen for those who have allergies.
Does anybody have any questions? I know the, the information was in our packets. But since Katina and Brendan are here, they may be answered, be able to answer anything. Otherwise, we'll be hopefully voting on it under action items. Okay, must be very clearly written because none of us have any questions. Thank you. So now we're on to the discussion item for the recommendation to close the Wyndham Center School. People may remember when the budget was originally, proposed budget was presented to us a few months ago. Dr. Youngberg made a recommendation, recommendation to the board to consider closing Wyndham Center School. And we're also talking about returning grade five students to the middle school. This is something that is a board decision. It is something that the board needed to hear more information about and have time to have a full discussion about this evening. And as I said earlier, it's, we're not slated to take action this evening. So I think, well, what, what I'm proposing is that we kick it off with the presentation from Tracy. And then we open it up for discussion and questions. Okay? Thank you.
And just before I, I'm going to go to the podium and do the presentation from there. But before I do that, I want to make sure everyone's clear that my recommendation was for Wyndham Center School to close after the '24, '25 school year. Not now, a full year from now, or after we finish this year and all of next year. So I just, I, I heard some of the angst in one of the public comments voiced that this was a decision, we know the decision hasn't been made yet, but it's not for more than a year from now. So I want everyone to be clear on that. So I'm working without a clicker, so I'm going to be letting them know when it's time to advance slides. See how this goes. All right, so I'm looking at this presentation as an opportunity to bring specific details about my recommendation to the board and the community in general. I hope to answer as many questions as possible. The board has a copy of the presentation in front of them. You also have additional documents that we'll talk about because we can talk through all of them tonight. That's my goal. I wouldn't have made a recommendation to close a school if I didn't believe there were real reasons why. And I'm trying to help the district not end up like some of the other districts you might be hearing about in the news. So I just, I want to make sure that this is a difficult decision and I understand it from an emotional level. But there's a reason why I'm making the, the recommendation. So I want to move forward in the slides there. Next slide, please. There you go. So the first thing I wanted to just do is remind the board that we have been having conversations about the elementary consolidation. We haven't said specifically what that will look like, but we've gone through scenarios. And we've been having these discussions since even before October of 2020. When I put together the first budget for the 2020, 2021 school year, when I had first taken over as superintendent, we realized very quickly that we are not, our staffing structure is not sized for the number of students we have. And even since the beginning of our discussions at the board level about the elementary consolidation, we have seen further enrollment declines. So we're going to talk about that. So aside from the board having these discussions in all of your retreats since 2020, so this is not a new topic, is what I'm trying to say. We haven't made any specific decisions. Well, we actually have made some decisions. But we've been having this conversation for a number of years. Because if you look at budgets the way I look at them and the way I think districts should be looking at them, you're never looking at them for, in just one year. You're looking at, what do I need next year to sustain this? What do I need the year after that to sustain it? That's how I look at the budget. So I knew when I developed that budget for 2020, 2021, that we were going to be in trouble. And then if you all remember, a series of things happened in March of 2020. We had the pandemic and the state started to send us lots of funds to support our response to COVID. That is actually the only reason we've been able to get through to this point on our budgets without having to have these difficult discussions. Now, all of that S R money is disappearing. So we are back to the same discussion that I talked about way back when because we're going to be in the same exact position. So I just want everyone to understand that. I am truly trying to help the district understand because if we take a hold of this and make the decision, we can stop layoffs and people being put in really bad positions. So I'm, I'm coming at this from a compassionate, how do we support the district? How do we continue to meet our goals without ending up in situations like some of the other districts are ending up in? So I just want everybody to know I've thought about this. It just consumes me constantly. It's, this is not a, a recommendation that I made lightly. It's because I'm telling you that things are going to happen when these S R funds disappear. So we've had a number of discussions at the board level in all of our board retreats. We actually put together an elementary ad hoc committee. Some members in the audience might have been members of that committee that functioned for a few years. The board had even made a decision in May of 2023 to move forward with one campus. We want to see all our K to four kiddos on one campus. We even developed an ed spec with contributions from people potentially in the audience for a consolidated elementary school that the board voted on. We went ahead and recently developed an elementary school construction planning committee, which Mark mentioned just a few minutes ago. And last night at the town meeting, we actually had the money appropriated formally by the town so that we can hire a project management firm to get us the information to talk about what this consolidated elementary school will look like and whether our plans, our visions are feasible. So we have done a lot of work and a lot of discussion leading up to this. This is not a rash decision. It's been a long time in, in the making. Any questions so far? I'm just going to grab my water. No? Right, I'll keep going. Okay, so then a lot of people have been asking, next slide, please. Why Wyndham Center School? Because it is true that in all of our discussions about the elementary consolidation, we didn't actually name a school, which school is going to be closed, right? We had discussions, we were talking about Natchog, we were talking about Wyndham Center. We've gone back and forth. So I'm going to, I'm giving you the rationale here. In this year, to put together our budget that I hope passes on May 14th, so everyone, please get out there and exercise your right to vote on May 14th, we asked for a 3.585% increase. To get to 3.585, which fingers crossed it passes, we had to make staffing cuts. So I already know that to get to 3.585, we had to reduce the staffing structure. In fact, my HR director and my assistant superintendent have been having conversations with people impacted by these staffing cuts. We are not going to have layoffs. That is our ultimate goal. But we are in the process of going through, how do you reduce your staffing structure? Now, most of my recommended staffing cuts for this year's budget were vacancies. So they're not going to impact the human beings because the positions are empty. But I, because we had to reduce the staffing structure just, just to get to a 3.585, I know we will need more than that for next year's budget just to maintain the status quo. It's like I told you, I look at budgets one and two and three years out. So looking at our declining enrollment and the increased costs of running our schools and knowing that just to get to a 3.5, I need to reduce staff. and knowing that just to get to a three point five, I need to reduce staff, I know that there's something going on, we need to act. So I made the recommendation at both of our budget workshops in February and March that we should consider closing Wyndham Center School after the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. I chose Wyndham Center School because it is the smallest school in the district. It is the smallest in terms of square footage. It is the smallest in terms of the number of classrooms. It is the smallest in terms of their enrollment, which means the fewest number of students, staff and families will be impacted by the closure. You can see the data there, the number of classrooms, the square footage, and I'm gonna go through enrollment data throughout this presentation. But I wasn't picking on Wyndham Center School. I chose it because that school cannot absorb another school, whereas they could be easily absorbed somewhere else. So that's the reason it was chosen. It is the smallest and will have the least impact to the humans involved. Any questions so far? Next slide, please. All right, so as you remember from the first slide I started with, we talked about how the board has made a decision about all the K four students being on one campus and we've developed an ed spec around that K four elementary school. In order for that to happen, grade five has to be returned to Wyndham Middle School. Sort of assumed in our moving forward with a K four elementary school that grade five is not involved in that. Currently, grade five is in our elementary schools. So right now, the middle school has four hallways. It was designed to have a fifth grade hallway, a sixth grade hallway, a seventh grade hallway and an eighth grade hallway. And for years, it did actually support those four grades. Right now, one of those hallways is taken up by Wyndham Early Childhood Center. They are getting a beautiful new facility. I can never remember where I am, but thank you, Brendan. Back that way, attached to the back of the high school is a beautiful new school that they will be relocated to this summer. That means there will be an empty hallway in Wyndham Middle School. The perfect opportunity for us to return the fifth graders, this would be for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The fifth graders, our current third graders will return to Wyndham Middle School. And we're gonna talk about that in depth in this presentation as well. Once they return to Wyndham Middle School, there are open classrooms all over our district and that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. That's how we can successfully close Wyndham Center School, and I know the emotional parts of it. Prior to coming to Wyndham, I just want everyone to know this. Wyndham was my very first opportunity working in a central office. I never worked in central office until I came here. I've always lived in schools. As a teacher, assistant principal, as a principal, I totally know where the emotional piece, what that building represents to people. I totally get it. But this is deeper than just how we feel because we have to be able to provide, provide a quality education for all the students. We have to understand how our enrollment is declining and our operating costs are, are rising. All right, so the fifth grade goes back to Wyndham Middle School, opening up classrooms that are available in our elementary schools. I am going to show you some of the communication commitments that we are going to engage in to make sure all of our students, families and community members and staff understand what this means to them. It's a change, right? Change is not easy, requires lots of communication, it requires support through the transition and we also have to make sure that this group of current third graders has a chance to actually say farewell to their elementary school because in their minds and in their families' minds, they were being promoted from fifth grade. This will be a change, right? They're gonna be, they'll stop at their elementary school at fourth grade. So there's a whole lot that's gonna go into this. Lucky for all of you, I was actually a principal in, we'll get to the next piece, but I was a principal in a five, six school that lived inside a middle school. This is exactly what I'm envisioning is going to happen at Wyndham Middle School when we move the fifth grade back. I'm envisioning two schools on one campus. Five, six school, seven, eight school, living in the, in the confines of the same school. Our, our dual language program will run grades five through eight as it does now. The reason why I really think it's important that we talk about the two schools within one building is because I honestly and truly believe there are developmental, pretty significant developmental differences between a fifth and sixth grader and a seventh and eighth grader. And most of the time, parents are concerned about the two mixing and I, I wouldn't blame them. It's, it's a real concern. So I have actual, about a decade's worth of experience of living in this two schools on one campus and monitoring separate schedules and having shared staff and common goals. So I feel like I'm gonna be able to help lead this without, with, you know, without, without too much trouble because I understand what it looks like. We will basically be able to control the interactions between the two schools and get together and celebrate when we want to and, and do our own things when they don't want to. Some of this leadership work around the five, six, seven, eight schools start to take place this summer as we're preparing to move to this next model. Questions so far? Okay, no? Next slide, please.
Go ahead, Denise has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, just wondering, how about the offices for support staff? Is that gonna be affected when, once they close one school and the staff around will have a space? You know, as an office space, is that something that we?
So the hallway, you talking about Wyndham Middle School when it's, when we move the fifth graders back? There's an entire hallway that's actually going to support everyone who's supporting fifth grade. So each of the classroom teachers would have a classroom. All of the support staff would have office space or be tied to classrooms. Yeah, there, if, if you want, I can take you for a walkthrough, but it, fifth grade lived there before. We know it can live there. So.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Mary.
Yeah, I mean, the, the fact that fifth grade was there and in the middle school and two of my children did fifth, fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth in the middle school, but the third didn't because, so moving the fifth grades back to the elementary schools is skewing these numbers. So the fact that, yes, we can show that the middle school has an, has space for fifth graders because it was built for four grades. However, all of the elementary schools and using the numbers from basically post 2012 is, is using it when we had a special master who just came in and said, all the fifth grades are going back to the elementary schools. So in a sense, to use those numbers when the fifth graders had been put into the middle school when that new school was built and for various reasons, moved them back. So I'm saying to, to say that all of these elementary schools have declined are showing numbers that aren't what they were in 2012 when we first put fifth graders back and also just as Barrows was opening. It doesn't mean our student numbers have really declined that much. And we also have a district that is young, or actually a town that is young. And we have, you, you know, when we did get the demographic report and it was actually kind of crucial for the high school project. So there were several visits of, you know, and correspondence with the demographer who's, nobody has a crystal ball, by the way, but you know, they have some methods. Municipalities that have a higher percentage of young people and I believe Wyndham has something, you know, you know, it's, it's like twenty-five percent of people are under, I don't know, thirty or something like that. And the average age is in the thirties, whereas with the rest of the state, it's in the forties. This is a potential population boom area. So on the one hand, we have numbers that are not actually as transparent. It is not that the schools had this high level because fifth grade was just arbitrarily taken out of the middle school, put back into elementary schools, which bumped up. You know, the numbers in the elementary schools before twenty twelve, twenty thirteen were actually lower than what you're showing here. So what I'm saying is they didn't suddenly, you know, decline. They, that this high number is artificially high.
So, okay, I, I just wanna thank you for that feedback, Mary. Every single bit of the data that's in this presentation comes from EdSite, the State Department of Education's monitoring of enrollment in the district. None of it is made up numbers. I will, I can send you all the links so you can look at it. I would like the opportunity to talk through what the slides say about enrollment, but I don't think what you're sharing is actually accurate. Because this, this information, I, I can't tell you the history. I wasn't here. I, I read about it in, in your minutes in articles about, you know, what happened in Wyndham, but I can tell you what the data says and what the state has in our, on EdSite. It's all state confirmed information. Okay, so if you just give me a chance, I'd like to walk through all that and hopefully help you understand what, what I'm trying to present. So as I mentioned before, Wyndham Middle School has four distinct hallways. It was actually built for more than a thousand students. It currently has five hundred and sixty-five, I believe. As I mentioned, W E C C is occupying one of those four hallways. They will soon be moving out. We are imagining moving ten fifth grade classrooms to Wyndham Middle School for the start of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Four of those classrooms come from North Wyndham, two of those classrooms from Sweeney, two from Natchog and two from Wyndham Center. That's how we got to ten. Again, grades five and six will be one school occupying the first floor of Wyndham Middle School. Grade seven, eight will occupy the second floor of Wyndham Middle School as they did in the past when, when they were there. We are anticipating enrollment once the fifth grade moves back of around seven fifty to seven seventy students. And I will let you know that's slightly different than what was emailed to the board on April twenty-sixth where I said, we said seven forty to seven sixty, so I made that adjustment there. But still, nowhere near where the, the, the capacity that the building was built for and actually nowhere near where it was when the fifth grade was there before. So we're gonna talk through that. All right, next slide, please. So what I did for each of the schools is identify right from EdSite, that's actually a screenshot from the state website. That is the last ten years of enrollment data, so from twenty fourteen, fifteen to our current day, current school year. In that ten year timeframe, the highest enrollment at Wyndham Middle School was six seventy-eight. This is the state's data, comes right off of EdSite. The way the state monitors our enrollment data is they take a snapshot on October first, in this case, October first of twenty twenty-three, there were five hundred and sixty-five students at Wyndham Middle School, grade six through eight. When I look back at the data between two thousand and six and two thousand and twelve, when Wyndham Middle School did have fifth graders, the enrollment data on average was about nine hundred and sixty-five students. So what I'm suggesting, when we move the fifth grade back and we end up around seven seventy, we're nowhere near that number that existed when they were there before. So in my opinion, there's plenty of room and opportunity to move the fifth grade back without even coming close to where we were before because our enrollment has significantly declined. And not only that, we also opened another school. We have a STEM academy that opened in twenty thirteen. And actually, as I read the minutes of the board, a, a school was supposed to be closed when that school was open and that never happened. And enrollment has continued to decline over the last ten years. This is why we're having the discussion right now. Questions about Wyndham Middle School so far? Okay, I know that there's often the questions when, whenever you're talking about relocating classrooms, what are class sizes going to be like? Next slide, please. We are actually not impacting class sizes at all because we're relocating classrooms. We're not eliminating teaching positions. So we've taken the ten classrooms that exist in our elementary schools and we moved them to Wyndham Middle School along with the ten teachers. We're not impacting class sizes. So we've given you, these are projections based on our current enrollment data. We've given you the projections at Wyndham Middle School for twenty-four, twenty-five and we've given you the projections for twenty-five, twenty-six. Right? We are assuming a six student decrease because on average, when we look at how many students do we lose between fifth grade and sixth grade? About six students over the last five years have left each year. So we made that adjustment in our data. We're using all our own data to come up with the projections. So there's no change to class sizes because we're not changing the number of teachers. Questions so far about Wyndham Middle School? Next slide, please. So just to recap, using our cute little logos, we are imagining that the fifth grade would be moving back to Wyndham Middle School. So all the fifth graders will become Wildcats for the start of twenty-five, twenty-six and we will be thinking about two schools on one campus. Any questions before I go on to get into the Wyndham Center part? Okay. All right, last, this last slide is just some of the communication commitments that the district will be following through on in terms of getting our students, our staff, our families and the community at large onboard around the idea of moving fifth grade back. It's a big, it's a big transition. In fact, in your folders, board members, is a draft letter in English and Spanish that we plan to send out to our current third grade families. And we've chosen dates with all of our elementary school principals where we've invited each of the third grade families to attend their child's elementary school in an evening in June where I'm gonna share this information with them so that they're, obviously, the letter hasn't been sent out yet, but so that they are prepared to start understanding that their, their, their current third graders will be doing fifth grade in Wyndham Middle School. And these are just some deadlines and commitments. One of the things that I think is really important and we've done a really good job of it as a district so far is creating a committee that will help with communication and with making sure that we're having that two-way communication. We're listening and receiving feedback. So I am gonna ask for the development of a committee. Board members will welcome to join. It'll include families, staff members, community members, board members, anyone that's interested in being a part of this so that we can make this transition back to Wyndham Middle School as calm and peaceful as possible. And at the same time, understanding that we have to have, if you look there, if you look up on the, on the options that are on the board, some kind of celebration for the, for the students who will be finishing up fourth grade in elementary school and going on to Wyndham Middle School. Any questions about the communication commitments or plans to notify families and students and staff? Yes, Lynn?
I would just like to suggest that once that committee is formed, that committee may make adjustments to this. This is the projected plan, but if we're gonna be asking for input from
Absolutely.
different stakeholders that we would, once that committee gets formed this summer, we would be starting to maybe add things here too.
Absolutely. This is just a projection, some of the things that I know have to happen, but I, all of our committees run like that. We are taking recommendations, you are supporting the process, we're listening to you. Absolutely.
No, I appreciate this being laid out and it is a heavy, heavy lift to do communication.
Absolutely, and you'll see, I'm not able to give specific deadlines because I don't know when the board's gonna actually vote on the Wyndham Center School thing, but the same kinds of commitments are gonna come about as a result of that when we get there. Next slide, please. So again, a screenshot from EdSite, the state's website, you'll see from twenty fourteen to our current enrollment, the highest enrollment at Wyndham Center School was two eighty-two back in twenty fourteen, fifteen. And as of October one, there were two hundred and five students. So a, a decline in enrollment. Next slide, please. We have given you a projection at Wyndham Center School for twenty-four, twenty-five, the number of classrooms we'll be utilizing and the, and the estimated or projected enrollment. So we're projecting a hundred and eighty-one students at Wyndham Center School for next year. And if Wyndham Center School stays open, we're projecting a hundred and thirty-three students once the fifth grade is moved out at Wyndham Center School. My recommendation is that you take the, so if you look at the twenty-five, twenty-six box, because if, if the board votes to close Wyndham Center School, it wouldn't be open. You look at the, the one kindergarten class, the one first grade class, the one second grade class and the one third grade class. I'm recommending that those four classrooms, K one, two and three, go be relocated to North Wyndham School. North Wyndham School, if you remember, lost four fifth grade classes. They would gain these four elementary. It's a wash. There's no, very different, slight difference in their enrollment, which is on this presentation. The fourth graders, and we have a little bit of a bubble in fourth grade, at least at this point in time, we are anticipating there being three classrooms of fourth graders. You'll see there, one unilingual and two dos reos classrooms, a total of fifty-one students. We are recommending that those three classrooms go to Sweeney School. Now, this is the, this is the one group that I think will need the most TLC and we're gonna need to work with this, with these students and these families because this group will actually be moving twice. So I know that that's, that's problematic and that's something that we're gonna need to work through because remember, they'd be moving from Wyndham Center School to Sweeney. They'd spend their fourth grade year at Sweeney and then they'd go right around the corner to the middle school for fifth grade. So they actually have two transitions. That is the group that is most impacted by this. In my mind, the kindergarten, first, second and third graders will just naturally be a part of the North Wyndham School community. It will become their elementary school. So that is what we're estimate, what we're projecting. We are going to go through and look at sibling and out of area placements. I've talked to the board before about out of area placements. So parents can ask to have their children attend a school outside of their neighborhood. Students may be required to attend a school outside of their neighborhood because they need support from specialized programs or they're taking advantage of our dual language program. Occasionally, we reach capacity in our small schools. We have too many kids in a classroom and they can't stay. We can't have a classroom of thirty, so we have to move you to another school where there's room. So for all those reasons, there are many students currently not attending a school in their neighborhood. We will be looking at the siblings of the students that are being moved from Wyndham Center School and out of, at our, out of area placements. We are hoping to have a minimum number of families. We don't wanna have families that have elementary students in more than one school. That's very disruptive, trying to drop your kids off in more than one place. Trying to drop your kids off in more than one place. Um, we're going to work to, to reduce that number, if not eliminate it. And we're just letting you know at the bottom of the screen that these are estimated enrollments based on what we know now, right? We don't. We don't know what's going to happen over the summer. They could be lower. They could be slightly higher. What I can tell you is we're consistently seeing enrollments drop. Uh, and you know that when you look at the slides I provided you from the state. We're, we're going down. We're not, we're not suddenly going up. So that's what I know so far. Questions about Wyndham Center Schools' projected enrollment?
Yes, I have a question.
This is a board discussion.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, members of the public are not allowed to ask questions.
Till the end.
Till the end, um, during public comment, okay? Um, are there board members who have questions right now? No, you can keep moving.
Okay, thanks. Next slide, please. Just using our cute little uh, logos again, just a reminder that. All Wyndham Center School kindergarten, first, second and third graders, those four classrooms will go to North Wyndham School and become North Wyndham Bobcats. And all the fourth graders from Wyndham Center School will become Sweeney Stars. That is what I'm recommending. Next slide, please.
Um, just, just to be clear though, you're recommending that with the caveat that given the, some families. So, so there may be some cha- some.
It's possible there's going to be some changes, but the majority of that recommendation is going to play out.
Okay, but, but.
We're going to work.
For people who are listening, if somebody had two children in two different grades at. Wyndham Center School and some of them, one kid was going to be going to North Wyndham and the other to Sweeney. There might be some switching around to try to keep the kids together.
Right, we're trying to reduce, if not eliminate, the potential for families to have kids in more than one elementary school. I will tell you now, it's, it exists right now because of our out of area placements. It already happens, but we're going to work to see if we can reduce that number.
Thanks, I just wanted to reiterate that because I think that um. That's a sensitive issue for people. Katina?
Dr. Yonberg, I was also, uh, I don't know if you have it later on on your presentation. But I would be interested in uh, knowing the distribution of the staff. As the, you know, the Wyndham Center staff, how they're going to be distributed. I know the fifth graders will go to the middle school. Uh, the other like social workers, uh, custodial, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. North Wyndham, in terms of enrollment, again, you see the two thousand fourteen fifteen data, ten years worth of data. The highest enrollment at North Wyndham School in that ten year period was four hundred and seventy five. As of October one of two thousand twenty three, we're down to four thirty. Next slide, please. We have projected out if North Wyndham School, uh, you can see their, their enrollment, we're projecting for, for twenty four, twenty five. And you can see that they go from four thirty seven on a projection. Once they receive the students from Wyndham Center School. Uh, the kindergarten, first, second and third grade classrooms and they lose the fifth grade classrooms, there, we're projecting an enrollment of about four fifty nine. So the enrollment doesn't change. It also doesn't come, is also not at the maximum number that we've seen in the last ten years at North Wyndham School. Questions? Keep going. Same thing holds true for Sweeney. Ten years of data from Edsite. Two hundred and eighty was the highest student enrollment over that ten year period. As of October one, two thousand thirteen, they were down to two thirteen. Next slide, please. And then we projected Sweeney's enrollment data, two hundred and twelve for the twenty four, twenty five school year. And then once the Sweeney uh, school absorbs the fourth grade, they have a lot of fourth graders. Um, they're up to two twenty eight, but still not um, at the levels at their highest of two eighty. Questions so far?
Yeah, and, and some of the classrooms are lo- large size. You know, they're all different. Some are twenty five, some, so I do think that's more than.
So they're.
Increasing class sizes.
So the, the class sizes are actually the same. We're not, we're. The current, the current number looks just like our class sizes right now. Next year's projections and maybe I should have included this year's. Class sizes because they don't look very different. You are right. We, we have bubbles occasionally like. Uh, the fourth grade you can see there. Uh, there's a bubble in second grade if you go back and look at the data. Um. If we run into the, the place where there's more students in one particular grade, we always have the option of opening another classroom. That happens. That happens all the time. Districts do that all the time. So that's not, that's not, that shouldn't stop you from thinking about this from a broader perspective. Um, but we do have classrooms of twenty four and twenty five now. Next slide, please. Oh, sorry, Mark. Mark?
Again, going back to the Sweeney twenty five, twenty six, grade four, why would we not just even that out? Why would we have two twenty fours and then?
Well.
Three below.
Two classes are unilingual and three are dos rios, so that's.
That's the reason.
Yeah, the, the dual language piece.
The blue ones are.
Dos rios, yep. Actually, that's one of the benefits of the consolidated elementary school. We would have much more of an opportunity to level things off. Uh, and share the wealth across a, you know, larger grade level. The smaller schools sometimes put us in a position where we're forced to, you know, to keep. A classroom at a certain size because there's nowhere else for them to go or no other classroom. So. It's one of the benefits of a consolidated elementary school. Next slide, please. Nachhog School, we've done the same thing. Now Nachhog would not be receiving any students from Wyndham Center School. But they would potentially be this, the school, should there be a change, a sudden change in enrollment, they could potentially see. New students moving into the district, join them. So from two thousand fourteen through two thousand twenty four, their highest enrollment was three forty. Uh, as of October one, two thousand twenty three, they were at two fifty four. Um, so they have also, everyone is seeing a decline in enrollment. Next slide, please. We projected out for them. Um, twenty four, twenty five, we're imagining two hundred and forty four students. And twenty five, twenty six, assuming no one else moves into the district, we're, we're looking, we're projecting that their enrollment is actually going to be slightly below two hundred students. Next slide, please. So then we just done an enrollment summary uh, for all the schools so that you have the information. Should you want to go back and look of what the projections in twenty five, twenty six will be. Based on the other information shared from Edsite, the state's website, um, just so the board members have it as reference. Nope, it's next. Next slide, oh, that is the correct slide. Thank you. So I didn't set it up in a, in a. Chart form like I did for the grade five students, but the same idea is true. We will be looking to make. Uh, to be committed to timely uh, communication and collaboration about the close. Of Wyndham Center School should the board vote to do that. Um, written notification would be provided in English and Spanish. We would provide multiple opportunities, uh, multiple methods and reminders so that it's not new information to anyone. Um, a community newsletter and mailing will be sent out so that everybody is aware of the change. Um, it is possible that if the board were to make a decision before this school year, that I could actually connect the family forums that'll be happening about. The grade five moving back to Wyndham Middle School to this potential closure and get, and let people know before this school year ends. Obviously, I can't give you dates if I don't know when the decision is being made. Um. I want to make sure that we have um, those grade level parent meetings so that parents of the students being moved to the new locations feel supported. Um, that we, we're connecting people. I think it's really important that the district think about some kind of farewell to Wyndham Center School Committee. Because remember, this is deeper than just the families and students and staff impacted. It's a community building and it has memories. It holds a lot of. Uh, really special things. So having a farewell committee would give us an opportunity to generate ideas about how we might say goodbye. Um, in the event the board makes that decision, uh, community engagements and possible forums, we're, I'm really open to any suggestion. Um. Again, the committee would be offering suggestions. Um. I, myself and Neil, um, and our HR Director Grace, um, are obviously committed to checking in with the staff. Um, and regularly supporting, you know, providing them with updates so that they're aware. My goal would be for all of my bargaining unit meetings that take place. Um, just about every month, that this would be a topic added to all of our agendas so that we're talking about the move, the fifth grade move back to Wyndham Middle School. And we're talking about the potential closure of Wyndham Center School, that it's just ongoing topics uh, so that we're able to address issues as they pop up. Um, obviously, if there's impacted employees involved, we would be looking for HR um, to have. You know, ongoing communication with those employees. And obviously, I'd be providing uh, updates to the board on how things were going and it's, and it's possible that the board were, would be involved. Um, some of the board individuals as a committee. So I think there's some natural ways to connect the two messages, the fifth graders going back to Wyndham Middle School. And the potential closure of Wyndham Center School, um, you know, when the board, if and when the board makes that decision. Questions about communication?
Mary?
Well, I have some uh, questions about the questions that we have been getting. Um, and, or that have been asked previously. So I don't know if that's another topic.
That's what I, I had mentioned earlier that you have them in your packet and we're going to talk about them. The next, next slide, please.
Um, actually, before we, I'd like to talk about communication.
Oh, okay.
Um. I appreciate that um. The timing of the decision that the board makes one way or the other is going to impact. Um, how soon or not we can be communicating with families. Um. I would also like us as a board to be thinking about. When we make a decision one way or the other on this, the other part of communication that's going to need to be happening. Is around um, the concept of moving all the K through four students onto one campus. In a consolidated elementary school, which will then have impact down the road for people. So there's a lot of talking that needs to happen in the community and I. I apologize if I jumped the gun on that.
No, I appreciate that. And it's actually the second bullet, uh, third bullet up there about the community newsletter and mailing. I sort of envisioned some way of. Maybe on a quarterly basis or it could be a monthly basis that we're mailing out information because you're right, all these things are connected. And the people are going to want to know like, why are you doing this? Why are you thinking about this now? What is, you know, what does this mean for my kids, for the community? So I agree with you. We need to get out in front and make sure that we're regularly updating people.
Because there are a lot of layers to this. I mean, essentially, if we move for, if we bring to the voters the consolidation. Um, of the elementary schools, which they'd have to vote up or down on in a referendum. I think it's important for all parents to understand that. Certain age children will be impacted by that. You know, by the time the school is built, it won't impact. Most of the kids who are in elementary schools now, but it will impact maybe a three-year-old or whatever. So. It's, 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 it's just that we're going to have to paint a picture of a lot of stuff going on. It's almost like a. A graph or, I mean, a chart, like a pictures of how it all fits together. But I'm just starting to think about that from a communication point of view.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, next slide, please. Just to let the board members know that you have uh, in your packets. All of the questions and the responses received to date. So we received some questions initially from the Wyndham Center School staff. Um, I answered them in writing and then Neil and I attended a staff meeting with them. We received one parent's public comment. Um, a few weeks back and I have provided the answers. I provided them to the board and we can talk about them tonight. We can talk about all these questions tonight. And I also received just on Monday, uh, questions from the WFEP Bargaining Unit, our paras, tutors, security guards, campus safety. Um, and I responded to them in writing and provided those to the board as well. So. I'm open to having a conversation about all those questions and providing you, providing the answers for the community. I also gave. Um, just from a, more from a budget standpoint, I gave board members a copy of the elementary utilities. Uh, from twenty one to twenty three, the same information that was provided to the town council. And I gave you the state's per pupil expenditure report. Um, that report shows you just how much we're spending on elementary schools and how much it costs to operate a school. When you have so little, uh, so few students in it. Because we still have to provide all the same services, whether there's two hundred and fifty students or a hundred and twenty five students. So it is, it's very costly per pupil.
Okay, is that y- your presentation?
That is my presentation and now we can have.
Now we can open it up, the discussion. I, I just want to signal to the board. That I really would like to go around the table and have each board member have a chance to say. Something or ask questions so that it doesn't just end up being one, two or three of us saying things. Um. But uh, Mary, you had your hand up first. Start with uh, Mark. Is there any uh, thing you want to put on the table, concerns, questions, things you need more information on?
Uh, no, I'm, I'm happy with the report we have here and the information we have, looking forward to hearing some more in detail. But I think between this and then looking at the possible consolidation of the four schools, we, we have quite a bit of work ahead. So. I'm at this point still positive in terms of, of moving forward and I understand the logic. Uh, behind the, the need to possibly close Wyndham Center, uh, as, as we're also looking at closing the other three schools. But uh, I also understand the emotional tie Wyndham Center, having served on the board for a number of years. Uh, Wyndham Center's always had a soft spot in people's hearts. So I know it's going to be difficult.
Is there anything you need more information on, um, for us to deliberate on? Um, or, I mean, not to put anybody on the spot, we could also follow up after today, but. Anything you'd want more information about?
Well, I just need more time to, to read over the information we have and I don't have any real questions right now, but I may have after.
Okay.
Spend a little bit more time with the information.
Thank you. Paula?
I appreciate all the information that's been given to us. Um, I guess one of the things um. That perhaps we can look at more if in fact we even need to, but some of our specialized classrooms. The impact on those students, um, it appears that those class sizes aren't going to be any larger. Um, I'm thinking of the dos rios, for instance. Um, in terms of the teachers that are supporting them now and how that transition will be. Um, assuming that the teachers will be different. Those kids may need a little bit more support. I don't know if there are plans. Uh, for those specialized populations. I think that's something that we'll probably need to look at.
We're really just relocating classrooms, so we're not actually changing the supports we're providing the students in terms of. Actual classrooms, we're just taking them from this building and moving them into another. So I, I don't see that as an issue. Um, obviously, you know, part of doing this is because we're operating a school with so few students in it. We think we can absorb the, the students into. The other locations, um, but I don't see a change in what we're offering them from this move. The, the one change I do see is the opportunity for us, for the district, not to be carrying. Millions of dollars of operating costs when we don't need to because that could be used to support our students better. Right now, that's what we're doing. We're operating too many buildings for the number of students we have and that money is just sort of being wasted. In, in, and I, and I don't mean that, that, I don't want that to be taken the wrong way because obviously I don't think any work that our teachers do is wasted. What I mean is if you're operating a building you don't actually need, you are actually not making a financially. You know, smart decision. And we've been doing that for a really long time in that a school was supposed to close when Barrows opened. And it didn't happen. So we've been carrying those operating costs since two thousand thirteen and it's catching up to us and it's going to continue because. You know, all of your, every year you have the potential for your costs to increase. You have. Salary increases for your bargaining unit members. You have cost increases for. Instructional materials, for utilities, for things that schools need. So you can imagine that every year it's going to cost you more than the year before to run the, to run the district. So I'm, I'm just trying to give the board members a heads up so that we don't end up. My fear is the school doesn't close. What'll end up happening is we're laying people off while we're keeping the building open. And that's going to impact everybody. It really is. So, thank you, Paul.
To be clear though, just for people listening to this. We're talking, Paula, we're talking about moving the teachers and the students. So unless a teacher decide, or a support staffer decided to leave. And not make that move.
So those teachers would go along basically with the classes that are.
Yeah, oh, and, and there is, obviously, there's going to be some staffing, any duplications of service we wouldn't be doing, right? So we are anticipating that there will be a reduction in staff. What we're, what we're saying is if you give us the opportunity to do it now, to, to make the decision and let us work through it. We can make sure there aren't layoffs and work through how that might happen. If we suddenly have to do it because we didn't get the, the budget we need. If we suddenly have to do it because we didn't get the the budget we need in twenty five, twenty six, we aren't going to have the time. We're just going to be laying people off, like a lot of districts in the news right now. Where I'm literally trying to avoid that. That is why I made the recommendation.
Thank you.
Yep.
So is that clear now, Paula, to you? OK, I mean, there will be impacts on staff and teachers. But, um, planning will hopefully minimize.
Correct.
That. Mary?
Yes, um, I would just like to preface this by saying that, having been involved in a statewide case. Um, Connecticut Coalition for Justice in Educational Funding that took over a decade. And having been a plaintiff. Um, that the whole idea about budgets is much more complicated than. You know, going from one year to another and whether it's a three percent increase here and how the local funding arrives. Um, Wyndham gets al- almost two thirds of its budget from state and federal funds. And so I I do feel a little bit that I, um, I did not. Perceive nuance in the presentation with regard to Wyndham's budget now and in the past. And in the future, and just the idea of educational funding in general, but that is a separate parenthetical discussion. Um, so I would like to say that, you know, we do. Consider parents to be partners. That is, um, one of our. Uh, goals that we hold up, um, that and. I do take that very seriously, and I do think it has been unfortunate that. Having, uh, targeted conversations about the looming, uh, ideas or the potentials that are going to happen. That that it is not perceived that way, um, especially by parents whose families are going to be impacted by the closure of a school. I mean, in twenty twenty, it was Natchog, and we you can look at the minutes, and for over a year, we did talk about. Almost exclusively closing Natchog as the oldest school, and and that did bring up, um, a lot of, uh. Conversation. Um, now, whatever the optimal size of schools and the numbers that, you know, I don't have that answer, but I just want to point out that, you know. We kind of change plans midstream, and that does cause a lot of anxiety. Um, the one of the questions in particular that I had is that, um, in answer to questions that were emailed to you. And specifically on staff layoffs. Um, and you cited six to nine positions. Um, however, to the Board of Finance and the Town Council, you said nineteen point five in order to. Um, say how much money would be saved, so I'm just, um, looking at that disparity. Um, also, I do think some of these questions need to be directed to the. Uh, some that were from the family or communities that need to be in Spanish, and they need to be disseminated.
OK, I just, I want to address so some of the things that you said. So the first piece about a midstream change, we didn't have to even have this conversation. Because the pandemic came in and gave us twenty five million dollars to ride through the last three years. I couldn't have predicted a pandemic, nor could I have predicted receiving the kinds of funds the district received. Um, but you're right, one of the conversations, and and the board never made a decision to close Natchog, but it was one of the considerations. Um, so was Wyndham Center School. We had the smallest school and the oldest school. Paula, you know, you were the committee chair. It was an ongoing conversation for a long time about either of the two schools. Um, but much has changed since then, so I made the recommendation about the smallest school because I think it'll have the the least impact to the humans involved. Least number of students, least number of staff, you know, the the smallest impact when I look across the district. The information that was shared with the Town Council had nothing to do with Wyndham Center School. It was about the K four consolidation and projecting what that school might look like in terms of a staffing structure. They're not the same argument. It's not the same data. Um, the Town Council's discussion was about the K four Consolidated Elementary School and getting the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To hire a project management firm. We didn't even talk about Wyndham Center School specifically at that meeting, so they're not the same. I, um, I like the idea of putting out the information, both of the the the, um. One public comment that we received, she spoke to us in English, so I'm happy to send this information, the the responses to her in English. Um, we can do a frequently asked question document and put all these questions together with the responses in English and Spanish. I actually think that's a great idea. And post it on our website, so folks know. I have absolutely no problem where I'm not hiding this if I. There's there's no, there's literally nothing that I'm hiding, and I'm completely transparent. I've been transparent since I made the recommendation in February. I'm looking long range at the district's overall stability financially, and. I don't know of any new pots of money, state, federal. I, we haven't been told we're getting anything new, so I'm doing my projections on what the district will need to run in twenty five, twenty six, based on what we know now. So I I don't know how else to respond to that, other than I've have thought about this really carefully. Um, and using the data I currently have and the data the state is providing us, that's how I made my recommendations and my decisions.
Thank you, um, D N E C. And by the way, we're so happy that you're back. Thanks.
Glad to be here. Thank you so much. Uh, thank you again for such a great presentation. You're a great speaker, great, great, great up there. So I just want one thing to consider, uh, I'm just thinking about the the wave of immigration. That is happening, you know, near us, near these states, and I know that, you know, Connecticut, especially Guilimantic, is a very popular. This place for for Latinos, especially when it comes to undocumented, so. Just thinking in the future and looking at what's going on around us and, you know, having all those situations with. I immigrants and the open states and all of this, uh, that is happening, these waves, I feel that it's going to be, our town is going to be impacted. In terms of having more undocumented, more Spanish speaking, and definitely the place that they come first is the school and the clinic. So this is, you know, one of just a thought, just a, you know, that I always think of. The waves and the situation that are around us that is not impacting us right now, but it will. And I love to see more Latinos, of course, but it's also, it's important to consider, you know, what services we have to offer.
OK, thank you. Are you concerned about enrollment numbers if there was a wave, an increase in? Because that's sort of what I was trying to show you, that I think we are still positioned to receive additional students. Should there be some change? In enrollment and should it stop continually decreasing and actually hit a spike? Because it could happen, absolutely could happen. I think what I've shown you tonight shows that there's going to be room in all of our schools for that. For us still to grow a little, even after closing Wyndham Center School, but I appreciate the comments. Thank you.
Thank you, D N E C. Um, Brendan?
Thank you. Uh, thank you for all this information. Obviously, you know, my family has been connected to Wyndham Center for, believe it or not, twelve years now. My son started there in kindergarten and is about to graduate from high school, and. I still have two children there, so this is not an easy conversation by any means. Um, but I, you know, looking at the financials and the analytics, I completely understand the need to close a school. It just. Is not financially viable, and these small schools also lack opportunities for some of our students that we might be able to get back for. You know, for example, if you have two kids in a classroom, they're having an argument, you don't have an ability to separate them right now, which. If we have more schools with a larger, you know, number of classrooms in each grade, you gain that, as well as, you know. For example, one of my daughters right now has a first year teacher fresh out of college. But that teacher has no colleague that is also teaching that same curriculum. Because she is an island of one in that school, which, I mean, she's doing an excellent job, in my opinion, but. Imagine how much better she could be doing if she had other peers, so I completely understand the need to close a school. Am I a fan of it being Wyndham Center? Not really, but you make a compelling case. Um, my couple of questions are, um, as far as enrollment, like you handle, you know, there was a scenario there for. Twenty five, twenty six, what about twenty six, twenty seven, where we have all those kindergartners coming in? How are they going to be distributed for?
So you raised a good question, and actually, our twenty five, twenty six, uh, projections, we assume that the kindergarten numbers, remember that we have that legislation that stops the kindergarten, starting. Starting kindergarten. The way they usually do, so we know we're going to have a a decrease in enrollment for next year. We projected out that our enrollment goes back to the average. We looked at the last five years. Uh, and filled them in, so they're actually in the data. It's our projection. Um, I I guess it's possible that there's, you know, many more babies out there that we're not aware of. The other thing I can let you know is I just spoke with Dr. Peter Prouder yesterday, and he sent over his invoice. He's the gentleman that did the enrollment study that they use for the high school. It's a district enrollment study, has all of our enrollment. He's a statistician. He does all the projections. We actually are in the process of hiring him, um, to focus. Primarily on what we need for the K four consolidate consolidated elementary school, but it's going to help us have projections for this. You know, we're using Neil, our in-house statistician, um, and I actually, he's been. Pretty accurate. He and I have been working together for seven years now, and he he knows his stuff. Um, but we did put the kindergarten kids back at our current levels for twenty five, twenty six.
OK.
We we made that assumption.
Yeah, I was just looking like as far as like if fourth grade is all going to Sweeney, like, are we going to, we're not going to make that fourth grade move to Sweeney again, or?
No, 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 then then from then on, right, we just move, if Wyndham Center gets closed, it's only that initial move. And then the school's closed and the kids move on in their own communities. The fourth grade does have the double move, though, that that's hard to, that's going to be a tough one. But everyone else just becomes a member of the K one, two, and three classroom, becomes part of North Wyndham School.
Yep, and and I guess my other question, is there an actual estimated dollar figure on what the annual savings would be?
So we think it's costing us about two point one, two point three million dollars to operate Wyndham Center School. Now, we're not going to have a complete cost savings, but there's going to be a significant saving savings if we're not operating that school and we're absorbing them into other places.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Brendan. Hilda?
Hello. I appreciate all the thought and work you put into the into the this, and you are a very good speaker and. It just flows. Um, I imagine it would be very difficult for the families of Wyndham Center School, as stated by. Um, Brendan. I worry about how the closure will affect the consolidation.
Could you tell me a little more about that?
Well, the the community, because we already have a hard time with, you know, passing budgets. So that's what I mean.
Don't speak it out in the universe. Right now, we haven't had a hard time passing budgets.
It's the B word.
Right.
That's just my concern.
OK.
Because it's going to affect a lot of people with the closure of Wyndham Center School. So now with, uh, the the fourth graders, fifth graders going back to the middle school. When my daughter was in the fourth grade and they were talking about sending them back to sending them to Wyndham Middle School. I was fearful bringing fourth graders with eighth graders, but hearing they will be separate. Makes me more comfortable when you said that there'll be a fifth and sixth, and then a seventh and eighth. So that makes me more comfortable, because, you know, I feel that the fourth graders are immature and. They pick up bad habits easily. So that's all I have to say tonight, though. Thank you.
Thanks, Hilda.
Thank you, Hilda.
Be back here in person.
It's nice to have you in person. Thank you.
Feels strange.
I think, well, I know with your work schedule, it's been hard to show up in person, but you've been online, so.
Yes.
Alicia.
I just want to thank you, Dr. Tracy, for all the information. And the support that the student will have when when they move to different schools. Especially the fifth grade moving to the middle school. And I know the middle school has a lot of classrooms, because. It's going to be the classroom that the preschool have, and it's a big place for the fifth grade. And I also, uh. Want to know, uh, to say about. Supporting the students that are moving when they when they close the the Wyndham Center School.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty sure maybe some of the parents are going to be concerned, but this, maybe the students are going to be happy when they move.
That's our goal, right, is to to make it as many people happy as possible, but knowing it's a significant change, it's going to impact people differently. But if I think with the right communication and engaging the staff around it, I think we're we're we can handle doing it. And I think it's a better alternative than not doing it. That's, I wouldn't have recommended it if I didn't feel that.
Thank you, Alicia Katina.
So I'm also very attached to Wyndham Center School, and it's not only in my neighborhood, but I was, I think. The first social worker there for five years, so. Um, yeah. So I, um, I had, it's in my heart. Uh, I do understand the financial situation. I also understand that we're going to hopefully be consolidated in one campus. That my two worries right now are, um, how are we going to prepare? The staff and community of each of the receiving schools, if we vote for this. To welcome and integrate.
Absolutely.
The staff and the students. So that they that they are part of that community sooner than. And faster than.
Sure, so it's, um, it's probably easier to do that from a student perspective. Right, because you can take kids on field trips to visit their new school and start connecting them, do activities, you can do that. The the one issue that we have to like sort of flush through this is the bargaining unit contracts. Identify, you know, first of all, superintendent has the right to transfer people anywhere over a around the district if I think it's in the best interest of the kids. So I have that ability. I would prefer not to make blanket transfers. I'd prefer to sit and have conversations with people about what might be the best fit for them. That's sort of what we're doing now, is trying to have those compassionate, you know, human centered conversations. It's not always possible. Sometimes you have to make the tough decisions that make people unhappy, but we've been trying to do that. Um, so what I'm trying to say is, I don't know if I could tell you exactly who is moving where right now, because the contract has. Some other things that I have to, you know, abide by, but I can tell you that I'm committed to having the conversations. And being as proactive as possible so that people know where they're going and when, as soon as we can offer them that information.
Thank you. That was going to be my second point. My first point still is on. The kids and staff of the receiving schools welcoming and integrating.
So like.
Our kids.
Like having conversations with the students and staff at North Wyndham and at Sweeney about they are going to be the recipients, so yeah, that's in our.
Also in 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 sharing in terms of their culture within the schools and how do they do stuff with might be very different than the teachers that are coming in. Um, you know, have the way that they do team meetings or et cetera. So there has to be so lots of communication and conversation, so it's woven, so that the adults don't project. Stress and rejection and then make the kids.
Spoken like a true social worker.
I am.
Yes, I know. Uh, you you raise a really good point. I've I've written down the welcoming part. I I hear you loud and clear. Um, obviously, the sooner the decision is made, the more time we have to actually tackle the tough stuff.
Mm hmm.
Um, so I appreciate that feedback and 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 you're right, because schools are like little families. Um, all by themselves, they all have their own identities, um, and they do things in different ways, so you're right, it's like melding two families together, and that's sometimes bumpy, so. You you raise a really good point and.
And, yeah. It's like cultural, um, like being a cultural broker, that you have to adapt. And so I did with that, but, you know, it's a lot of people at the same time. And if I could, um, get an idea, or we could get an idea of where the rest of the staff will be.
Right, I I I wrote down.
Yeah.
I wrote down, um, and again, it's all projections, so this is really difficult to do on the staffing side. Because. We're always assuming that the staff members we have stay, but that isn't always the case, and so there's, oh, you know, moving variables. But I can certainly get you what we anticipate will happen. It'll be our anticipation at this moment. I just, I also don't want to leave the district in a position to be vulnerable for saying something that isn't, can't be followed through on, so I want to be careful of that, but. Um, I have down that you want, that we need to get the current class sizes so that we can make the connections to the data I provided you. I want to provide the board with the Edsite link, so everyone can go and look at the data, so you know exactly where it came from. Um, you want some kind of projection about where the staff will be relocated, and I I can give you, I won't give you names, but I can give you, we believe there will be. This many teachers, this many paraprofessionals. Is that what you're looking for, like just, OK? Right, but but just by bargaining unit or non-affiliated, but not, you're not looking for specific people. Yeah, well, we see, we did a similar exercise for the Town Council when we talked about the K four. Uh, elementary consolidation. If you look at that document on our website, um, and some of you were actually at the meeting. We projected out what you would need to staff that school, the K four consolidated school, so I can do a similar exercise. For we are imagining this group will, you know, this group of supporting fifth graders will move here, and this group, if Wyndham Center School closes, will move.
And and again, equally important is the courageous conversations regarding, um, the integration.
Sure.
Within the staff, et cetera.
Thank you, Katina.
Um, oh, Hilda, go ahead. Hilda, go ahead. No, no, go ahead.
A question that just came to me, like, so when, when they come over to North Wyndham School. Are they gonna have their own classroom, or are all the first graders gonna be together in one classroom?
So that that's really interesting, because part of our, part of our, my decision to move kindergarten, first, second, and third grade into one school. Was so that the kids could be, as many kids from Wyndham Center School could be kept together. But I I'm not sold one way or the other. It's a discussion I'd like to have further with my leadership team and the staff at both schools. You could leave them intact, as this is the kindergarten class from Wyndham Center. You could also, you know, combine the students that already. Are at North Wyndham with the, with those classes. I I I'm not making a decision one way or the other. We have time to figure that out. I know that part of the reason why I thought this was a really good decision, actually aligned to one of the public comments we got. One of the parent that spoke on April tenth talked about kids being moved to all different schools. And this really isn't like that. The kindergarten, first, second, and third grade all together are moving into one school. They still have, hopefully, established friendships and connections. And people they know around them. So we were really thoughtful about that. And then the fourth graders, because we couldn't fit them anywhere else, are all going to Sweeney. Together. And again, as I mentioned, they're moving twice to the fifth grade. So. We we were thoughtful about how do we keep the kids at Wyndham Center School feeling comfortable in their new digs, in their new environment.
So second part question.
Yep.
So now, you said the teachers will be moving with them. So if they are in the same classroom, will they have two teachers in there?
No, that would not be, that would not be what we're looking to do. But if we moved twenty kindergarten kids into North Wyndham. They would need a teacher to teach an additional twenty kids. So a teacher would be moving with them. So there wouldn't be any doubling up. There's no doubling up now. Right? That would not happen.
Yeah, when you saw the projections of the room that we have in those schools, they're moving into it, an empty classroom.
Right.
Right, they're not moving into doubling up in a classroom with other fourth graders.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Dean E C.
One more question about uniforms. Is there any incentive of program for those parents that have to switch uniforms twice?
That's a great follow-up question. What's interesting is the survey, yeah, that that, and that's actually could be tied back, right? Again, something I think that we should delve into with a committee. It shouldn't be my decision. It should be what the majority really thinks about. It's a great question. One of the things that we learned in the survey is part of the reason why they thought the uniforms would be a good, you know, an effective decision. Many years ago when it was made, that it was supposed to save families money. Supposed to be cheaper to have your kids in uniforms than in other kinds of clothes. The survey from parents said the opposite, that they have to buy the uniforms for school and have the clothes the kids normally wear. So it's an interesting question, but I do appreciate that because could get at a lot of things. So thank you.
Thank you, Dean E C. Brendan?
I was just gonna comment on that. North Wyndham and Wyndham Center, from what I understand, have almost identical uniform policies. Sweeney's is slightly different, but that's one little.
Interesting. All right.
And and that's part of the, sorry, that's part of the culture, because Sweeney is. More structured or, if I may say, more rigid about, you know, having to have the uniform. While North Wyndham and Wyndham Center are more welcoming of variety. So that's part of the culture that we need to deal with in terms of relationships.
So I think what we're gonna do is wrap up the discussion part for tonight. I would like to hear from board members about what you're thinking about. You know, when we get some follow information, follow-up information, we could put it on the agenda at one of our next meetings. Get that information, have a chance to discuss it, discuss it. I would like to hear from board members, not tonight. But after tonight, about your thoughts about timing of making a decision, one way or another on this. I think what we're hearing in the presentation and in the questions is that. If we make a decision to move forward on this, a sooner decision is better than a delayed decision. As far as preparation goes. I'm an old lady now. I'm a senior citizen, but I will say that. You know, people know that I moved seventeen times when I was growing up, and I switched schools and classrooms. Sometimes more than once in a year. And I do think children are more adaptable than their parents. In most cases. I mean, there are always special cases. But I think if, if whatever, if we make this decision to do this. We will have to use the utmost care in making sure that we're taking care of people, staff, teachers. Parents and students. And I think if we set up the committees and have real working committees with the different stakeholders. We can do our best at that. But so I encourage board members to talk to me about what you think about timing on a decision on this. And Tracy, obviously, you've been given some follow-up questions from people today. We'll need to hear from, I'll need to hear from you. About when you think you'll be ready to come back to us, okay?
Yeah, I I can email the board tomorrow or Friday without a doubt. All of this information and stuff, I've thought about it.
But then we'll have to have a discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate the thought and patience. Put into this discussion. And now we're gonna go on to action items. So the first item is action on policy. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the proposed management plan for food allergies.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina.
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hands. Okay, motion passes. I'd entertain a motion to take action to accept the new scholarships from Wyndham Federation of Teachers. As proposed in our packet. And thank you, Wyndham Federation of Teachers. Motion made by Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. And then we have a motion to accept some donations. We could take it in one motion to accept donation from Asian Bistro in the amount of two thousand dollars. For the lock-in for literacy donation, as well as a thousand dollars. From Fifteen Ninety West Main Street LLC for the lock-in for literacy donation. Would somebody like to make that motion to accept those two amounts? Alicia made the motion. Dean E C seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay. Now we're on to approval of the field trip for Barrow's Stomach Academy to Sturbridge Village. On June fifth.
So moved.
Motion from Brendan.
Second.
Seconded by Paula. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, and then I would entertain a motion for approval of the Barrow's Stem Academy. Field trip to Springfield Museums.
So moved.
Motion made by Hilda. Seconded by Dean E C. Any comment, discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Great. And then I'd entertain a motion to. Accept the recommended budget transfer of seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars.
So moved.
Motion from Mark.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, thank you. And now we're on to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Come on up to the microphone, please. And please just identify yourself for the record. And you press the little button so it's green.
Hi, I'm Emma Linsky. I am one of the social workers at Wyndham Center. I just had a question. If Wyndham Center is to close. Is the district planning on like keeping the building and putting a program in there? Would we just get rid of the building?
So the buildings actually belong to the town. So the town decides what happens next. School systems can make recommendations, what they'd like to see, or if there's some way the school system might be able to use the building in the future, but we don't make those decisions. Just recommendations and discussions is a town decision.
Thank you.
Normally, we don't do questions back and forth. That's an easy, simple, that's a simple one. Yeah. Well, I'm I'm asking if anybody has any comment during public comment. I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Someone in the back, can you just check to make sure they're not muted online, please?
Yeah, I mean, she's already spoken up without.
Thank you.
Maybe she's not on anymore. Anybody else during public comment? Katina, you wanna speak during public comment?
I just wanted to say something about Dr. Reese. I know it's not.
Go ahead.
You know, but I would like to publicly acknowledge my bestie here, Dr. Reese. For completing her DSW, her doctorate in social work.
Oh.
Kara Reese.
Officially Dr. Reese.
Yes.
Congratulations, Cheryl.
Staff members.
That's great.
Yeah.
Seeing no other public comment, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn at eight forty-two.
I move, we move.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.